So, April 7.
Okay. I will second that. Do you have any changes or anything, Jim?
Uh, no. They all look good.
Okay. Yeah. So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. The tax collector's report, Kim said there were no tax refunds for this month, so we don't, just make a motion to table that.
Still moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, communications from the public. Margaret, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I sent an email. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Margaret.
So, my request was, um, in relation to the driveway work that's being done on Jack, Monday's property, former property, on 199, um, it's, my request that, it seemed to me that it was quite a lot of work, um, more than, I was surprised at the extent of it. And also, I noticed that quite a bit of metal debris of some sort had been dug up. So, my request is that someone go out, I don't know if John Cody's been out and maybe could make a record of how much ground was regraded, with, you know, what trees were cut and what that, what that metal is, which looks to be like the kind of metal you find in farm dumps over Connecticut. But, so, I've always found the driveway law a little confusing. And I gather this isn't a driveway, it's an entrance. And I think Russ has said wetlands aren't involved, or wetlands allows this, but it looks like there's new disturbance, but it may not be a wetland issue. So, I told Barbara, I don't even know who to ask. Zoning has some authority here, and Barbara has authority. So, at the, I thought, well, everybody's on the Board of Selectment. So, my request to the Board is, if you haven't done it, if John or somebody appropriate could make a record, or maybe Mark Law could provide it of just the extension type of the work, and also what was, what was unearthed there, and what's gonna happen to it. That's, that's about it.
Okay. Well, um-
Just add, I will just add one thing. It's, because it's so visible, of course, it gets the attention, but also, there are more driveways due to come in there, so it seems like a good time to sort out, if there's things to be sorted out, this seems like a good time to do it. So, now I'm really through.
Now, you're through? No, um, well, first of all, there is no driveway permit over there. I know that they got a wetlands permit, because the property was sold, and they are, they're looking to put a house up and a driveway. But, a couple of things needed to happen, number one, that before any driveway permit and went through, which was new, that the tax collector had asked us to do, and we did, and that no driveway permit would be given until all the taxes were paid. And that has happened, but it's also, it's on a state road. So, the town's driveway permit, we give after the state gives their okay for a driveway entrance to come out onto the state road. So, what all, so what, I can't even tell you if that is where the driveway is supposed to be, because I don't have a map of it, but, um, that was-
I'm here, Barbara.
Hey, Russ.
I guess the participant ID is the same as the password.
Correct.
I didn't know that.
Okay. Welcome.
But I'm here.
All right.
I'm alive.
So, anyway, it's very timely, because Margaret is here, and she was just speaking about the, uh, the property that's on the corner of Wakeley and Route 199, and that she has some concerns about it, wetlands. So, just-
Yeah.
And things that have been dug up.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm not sure about wetlands. That's one reason I, I came, hi, Russ. So, what I was asking was that somebody look at it and record, and also identify what was it, what is all that metal that was dug up. But, Barbara, when you started to talk about the state road and so on, now that's, when I started to look at who, who, who has, who's supposed to sign off on what, I've always found it confusing. And when it's on a state road and a difficult curve like this, it's probably extra confusing. So, at the moment, I was just asking for somebody to record, if they would, take a look at what happened. It's, it was a surprise. I, I don't know what covers just a little cut to let in a vehicle, but looks, that's sort of what I expected.
Well, why are we talking about this in a selectmen meeting?
But, that's communications from the public.
Partly, Russ, because I didn't know, if you look it up, is this a statement? Does the state have to say something? Barbara has driveway authority, zoning has-
Right. They don't, they need a DOT permit. They haven't put in the driveways. They cut in a little area so people could park, so they could show the properties.
My goodness, you could park quite a few people in there. That's what I'm asking.
Well, it's not a driveway, we, we, we met with them, we went through it. Margaret, I understand you people don't want this under any circumstances. I think it's very unfair when people buy property and people go out of their way to try to stop the development. They're getting DOT permits, they're delayed, because DOT's delayed, but they have a right to make a cut in. It's not the driveway. It's to make a path so they could show the property. They have a right to do that.
That's not a, well, you know, all I'm asking is that the extent of the work, the grading, the bulldozing, the tree cutting, uh, the brush burning. By the way, congratulations on our fire, we have many fewer brush fires these days than we used to have in the past. I've noticed that. And the metal that's been dug up, what is it? What's, what's going on there? It looks like car parts or something of that sort. So, I'm only asking that the work that was done there be recorded, so that we can sort out. Barbara was trying to explain to me, you know, first you need the state, then you get the driveway permit. This, this to me does not look like a little path to show people a house site.
No, they made a little cut in so people could park safely to show the house.
I, I just-
And the wetlands commission, the wetlands commission has approved what they have done.
You say it's not a wetlands issue, Russ. So, my question is, well, is this-
It's not a selectmen issue, is what I said.
Well, I, I put in my request-
I mean, the burn, the burning permit could be a selectmen issue, and Barbara needs to talk to Mark about what he did out there. It's done. I mean, it's over. It's, I don't know what he did out there. Looks to me like he threw the shed in with all the brush, which he did not have a permit for. He shouldn't have done that. That's, that's a first selectmen issue.
I didn't know there was a shed there.
We went out there, I spent my Saturdays, Margaret, and two hours going through what they wanted to do. And it's totally within wetland regulations with what they wanted to do.
Well, that's why I asked, was there a side, side, but we just say one other thing. Why did I come to the Board of Selectmen? In many towns, and I've talked to Barbara about this, mentioned it, in many towns, when people have concerns about applications that are in front of land use commissions, I say, go to the Board of Selectmen, because they have general sort of policy things about the town, and they can explain to you, and they don't have-
No, that's wrong, Margaret. That's wrong. The Board of Selectmen should have no interference with the commission's charge under the regulations. A Board of Selectmen should not be interfering with a land use board as it makes its decision.
You're all, you're all the people that have authorities. You're the zoning, the wetlands, and the first selectmen.
I, I got that, but we keep it separated. Jim doesn't vote when there's a zoning issue on the Board of Selectmen. I don't go near anything with wetlands when I'm on the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, well, I can go to Jim.
We don't vote members in. We abstain. Jim, they incorrectly said about Jim, it was a two to one vote about the hot dog stand. Jim abstained, from what I remember. So-
No, I voted no.
Oh, he voted no.
I voted no. I did not abstain.
You should have abstained.
No. An abstention is a yes vote.
So, I brought it-
Okay, we're getting off track here. All right.
I brought it to the Board of Selectmen, because looking at, and I did not expect to see a problem with this work at all. But, looking at what the problems were, I thought, well, it might be Jim, it might be Russ, it might be Barbara, it might be DOT, it might be the Fire March, you know, so where else are we supposed to go?
I will go over there-
You should respect property owner rights, that they got the permit that they needed to develop their property. You people are gonna try everything to stop this.
No, Russ-
And I got a problem with it, Margaret. I gotta tell you. I'm, I'm a person who's all for wetlands, but not one, but we need to respect property owner rights. And that's what our regulations state time and time again. And you guys are looking for any way to trip this up. If there's stuff that they dug up, you call DEP. That's a DEP issue.
Oh, now I have to go to it. It seems, I, my request is that the Board of Selectmen, I don't know who else to talk to. If I talk to two of you, make a forum, if I talk to you separately, I can't do that. So, I thought I would come to the Board and ask that, that you take a look at it, see what the authorities wore, my suspicion is-
I took a look at it, Barbara.
It's not a wetland issue.
I took a look at it, on two separate events, I took a look at it. I don't know how many times I need to look at it.
Okay, but wait a minute.
What you're asking to do is get into a court action about denying a property-
I'm not asking you to look at it, Russ.
Okay, Russ, hold, hold one second. I just want her to finish. What, what, what are you asking the Selectmen to do? Go out and look at it for what purpose? Just where are we burning?
To see if the, it looks to be the extent of the work, the grading, the tree cutting, and the unearthed metal debris, which now you say I should go too deep about that, it looks to me as if possibly it's a zoning issue. But, all I'm asking is-
Why would it be a zoning issue?
Because it's construction on a house site.
It's not construction. Nobody's building anything.
No, it's not even the driveway. It's not even, we're not even at the driveway. I'll tell you what, because we're gonna move on. We're moving on. I will absolutely go out there. I, I don't know that, I mean, first of all, there was burning done. The committee knows what the requirements are for burning, because it's brush only. I never, I don't think I've ever seen a shed out there, but I will question him about what's, you know, what happened out there. And that's all, that's all I can do.
That's all I'm asking you to do.
And there is no, there is no permit for a driveway yet. This is just to clear some brush.
That's the thing, there doesn't appear to be a permit for what was done. So, I'm trying to find out-
There is, Margaret, there is. I went out there, me and John, we approved what they wanted to do. The engineer was there. I'm tired of this. I really am, Margaret. You're losing me. You're losing me. I want you to know that.
Okay.
Because when environmentalists try to prevent people from their God-given right to develop a property and do it the right way, then you lose me. I just want you to know that.
This is the right way? Anyway-
This is the right, Margaret, are you calling me an idiot?
All right.
Are you there?
Well, okay, my request is-
Am I an idiot? I can't say-
Russ, I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you to look at it.
All right, Russ, hold on.
All right, that's it, guys.
Thank you.
All right. I will certainly go out there. Whatever metal there is, obviously must have come up, but it was, because it wasn't brought in there. But, you know what, Margaret? I will go look tomorrow, so that I know what we're talking about. But, he did have a permit to burn. He does not have a permit to build a driveway yet. So, he had permission to clear brush and burn it. That's, that's what he had.
Well, okay, thank you.
From me.
Thank you for going out.
I will. I will do that. Okay, um, we have, somebody else that came in? Paul?
Yes.
Paul, can you tell us who you are?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
It's Paul Manson.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, so we're moving on. So, we have commission and board appointments, and there are none listed, because there are no reappointments for the month of May. We have quite a bit for the month of June, so we'll list those next month, obviously. Okay, so the first order of business is deferring property taxes. And Russ and Jim, um, I, Kim Pachrypha, our tax collector, sent you, sent all of us an email. Do you have that, Russ? Because I, well-
Yes, yes, I would.
Yes.
And then read it?
I agree with what Kim wants to do.
Yep.
It's her job, if it makes it easier on her, um, I'm good with that.
I'm to, I totally agree.
Okay, um-
Barbara, there is one thing I think the town should look at, and we could put it on the agenda for the next meeting. People should be able to pay their taxes monthly, like they do their car insurance, their mortgage. It's, I was doing that, and then I got cut off. And it's much easier for a person like me to pay it monthly, than they get a big bill every January and July. And I don't know why the town can't come up with a way to do that.
Why don't you escrow it?
Pardon?
Will your bank escrow it?
My bank was sending a check every month to Kim. Kim would log it in, give it to Kim, the other Kim, finance director, who would cash the check. For some reason, Kim, the finance director, and I think this has to do with a vote I made last year, cut me off after that vote. Said, I can't do it anymore. It's too, too difficult.
No, can I, can I talk about that?
Yeah, wait, wait. So, Russ, just so you know, both Kims are on this.
Good, good, because I'd like to know why, why I can't pay my-
So, what happens is by January, you already paid up your taxes. So, in, or December, so by January, you were starting to pay the 2019 grant list, which will be due July 1st of 2020. So, we have nothing to apply it to. We don't have bills. We don't have a mill rate set. We don't have bills.
I'd like a way to fix that, because other towns are doing.
What?
I'd like to keep paying January, February, March, April.
So, Kim Barron talked to Rico.
And I think it makes it easier on people to pay their tax. You don't, I don't pay my car insurance all at once.
All right.
Pardon?
Well, now, hold on, Russ, because Kim's trying to answer you.
So, you are the only one that's ever asked to do that? Kim Barron talked to Rico, you know, our auditor, and he, he doesn't like that, because that money's going into this fiscal year, when it's for next fiscal year. It's not good accounting practices. So, he's the one that said no. We have nowhere, we have to, Kim had opened a separate bank account to put that money into for next year, just for year one payment. So, it was-
Okay, I get that. I get that. I understand that. I, I just see other towns do-
No, I think, I think other towns do it quarterly, don't they, Kim? Some towns-
Well, even if it, even if it's quarter-
Like Stanford, Greenwich, they're the, the Gold Coast.
Yeah.
And there's a few that do annually, just one, and most of them-
Here's my, here's my point, Barb and Jim. If you're a business, you want that money. You want that money.
I don't think the town can do anything-
Yeah, the money's coming in. The cash flow issue. So, but I don't know, if nobody agrees with me, fine. I just think it's easier on people, especially with this time coming up, to give them some way to pay their taxes ahead of time, so they don't get a big bill at the end of the game. Like everything else, like your mortgage is monthly, your car insurance.
I would think it's a lot more work for the tax office to take that monthly. And, but what I'm not following is, why would your bank not escrow it and hold it?
He doesn't have a mortgage.
Oh.
His mortgage is paid.
Oh, okay.
So, he wanted to still pay it monthly, like he did before. And he did it for the first year, but Rico called Kim and I out on it last year. So, we had to do something different. Kim was gonna have to open a-
All right, never mind. I, I think I'll take your advice, Kim, and put it into my bank, into a special account.
So, it was probably easier for you to open a savings account and put it in there than for the town to do it? It was either you or Chris.
I didn't realize that it was an auditor involved, any of that. It was just, it was going along.
Well, it's also only you. It's also, um, that you, you're the only one that has ever asked for it, so.
I can't be the only guy in town that doesn't have a mortgage, but, okay.
No, 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 that you want your taxes taken monthly. That's all I'm saying.
All right, never mind.
All right. So, I'd like to get back to the tax deferment program, that there was, originally, we voted on this last month, because it was supposed to be done by April 30th. But, after the select, and we did it early, because it was like April 7th. And then after the Selectments meeting, the Tax Collectors Association met, and they all spoke about it. And, um, so I'm assuming that you read what, what Kim sent out. And Kim, if you wanna say anything else about it, feel free to. I have no problem doing that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I did, and I'm all for it. Jim, you all for it?
Yes. We're not gonna, I don't want Kim Pachrypha, tax collector, to have to choose who pays and who doesn't pay. It's across the board. Everybody gets 90 days.
I thought that's what we did, so, okay. So, I totally agree with-
No, we didn't do that. What we did was, it was those who would fill out a form to say that they were affected by this COVID situation, had a threat.
You're right. You're right. Yeah, okay. No, I agree with Kim. That's complicated. I got it.
It's, it's a pain. Everybody gets 90 days.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, well, so, Kim, we have to do this resolution, right? You need that as a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what can I-
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay. I don't know, somebody else talking? No? Okay. So, Russ, there's a motion on the table to approve the tax deferment resolution that will give the tax deferment, new, this new program, everyone in town three months, three-month leeway. And then, Kim, after the three months, what happens? Just for the record?
Aye.
October 2nd, the, um, interest rate starts at 6% for anything that happens.
And so, this is still, if anyone is in arrears now, that's still staying at that percent?
Yeah, this does not involve anything from this grant list year. It's only the new year, beginning July 1st.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Yep.
So, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Kim, you wanna say anything else?
Nope, I'm all set. That's good.
Okay. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I will let OPM know that there was, that there's been a change. Thank you. Um, thank you for doing that, Kim. Uh, all right. So, the next thing on is this COVID-19. Going along with, you know, some of the things that are, that are happening is the unemployment. As of today, there are 117 people unemployed in the town. And it keeps increasing. It started out like 25, 26. It was almost 90 last week, so we had an additional, you know, almost 20 people. And so, um, that is another reason, you know, to give people a break here. But, you've got people that signed up immediately when they were let go of their job, and, you know, six, seven weeks later, they haven't even collected a check yet. So, it's been tough. It's been tough for some people. Um, and we need to take that into consideration, you know, with revenue collections, et cetera. The other thing is reopening. You know, we've been working remotely, and so the governor, first of all, all schools are closed until the end of the year. I mean, they're closed until they, they open up again, maybe in September. So, but he's looking to open businesses effective May 20th. So, what I wanna know is, um, we don't have to make any decisions right now, but, um, about reopening the town hall. And maybe we should just go this month, and then reopen it on, um, June 1st. And maybe even still not to the public. You know, not to the public again, because when we first closed, we closed the town hall, and we were all in there. And, uh, just, we didn't let the public in. But, I can tell you that the employees are doing an outstanding job in making sure that people have been responded to, their emails have been answered, their phone calls have been responded to. And, uh, so it's working out really, really well. John Blaney continues to go in and clean up whatever, and he goes out and does outside inspections. That's it. Um, he still has not been inside. The Board of Assessment Appeals, that's still on hold for those properties, because they have to go in homes. And, um, so, um, I was talking to the fire chief, because it is the fireman's Memorial Day Parade, saying, you know, they really need to come out formally and, and make a decision, which I think should be that it's canceled, because everything's being canceled. And they, he said, well, we'll have an answer by Thursday. Pickin' and Fiddlin's, another thing. They canceled the Bridgewater Fair. These things really should not be allowed to happen, but these are their events. And I don't know what you feel, you know, about the Selectmen having a say in it.
I think we should see what happens, right? We're like thinking months down the road, and-
No, but there's a lot of planning. There's a lot of planning that goes into it also for these-
Barbara, uh, Barbara, Kim?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, I'm all for reopening town hall, but we have to have a real definitive plan.
Yep.
On how we're gonna do this, how many people are coming in, um, the whole nine yards has to be laid out, on how we're gonna open that town hall. We can still have, we can have meetings. Uh, that's a big room. We just spread out. Everybody takes a station. But, there's gotta be a, a laid out plan.
I agree, Jim. You're right.
Absolutely. And there has been, other regions, our Region 5, which we belong to, they have a 10-point checklist for municipal offices reopening in their town halls. And I mean, one of the things is, you know, having someone come in and clean these places really well. Because while we've been closed, probably all of us have been in there at, at different points. So, if you're gonna open it to the public, we, we really need to have, we're trying to order these hand sanitizers that we can make available, you know, the machine, the dispensers for the, for the different hallways. You can't get anything. It's, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's hard.
You cannot get anything. But, um-
Even our company, which, you know, we depend on that, so we could keep them business, having trouble getting PPE.
I know. It's like, are you gonna, if we open up and we open it up to the public, are we going to require that employees wear a mask?
I think you have, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, are we gonna have the plastic, I mean, you know, what I'm trying, the clear plastic shields in front of all of the works?
It's almost not worth opening up.
The Plexiglas shields, that's what it is.
So, it's almost not worth opening up.
Mask, mask and sanitizer, I think is where we're going. Nobody comes in that building without a mask, and the sanitizer is available.
Yep.
But, Jim, what she's saying, and she's right, you, you would have to put up a Plexiglas, right?
Uh, it can be, we can work out other, we gotta look into the situation. A lot of this stuff can be done online. A lot of this stuff can be done online.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is it worth opening?
If it absolutely has to come in and see somebody, you know, I don't know. We gotta have a plan.
Yeah.
Barbara, I have a question.
Yep.
If the mask that you're wearing protects other people, not you, but it protects other people, then why do you have to still have a six-foot distance or Plexiglas? I don't, I don't get that.
Because at that point, you're not six, I mean, you aren't six feet away. And I don't, the types of masks that we're wearing, I don't know that they, I don't know that any of these protect you. You know what? The information changes all the time.
Nobody does.
It's like, it's like, then why wear a mask? Why do you make it through this?
Because it's the law. It's the law now.
I know it's the law. I know it's the law. I just wonder why they passed laws that, it's a moving target is what it is. But okay, I, I agree with Jim. We have to have a plan.
Yep. Well, and the only place-
I guess you gotta have Plexiglas is what you're saying.
Yep. I mean, you know what? People have to feel safe working there and people have to feel safe coming in, I guess. I mean, right down to, are we gonna allow people in just as we did before? Are we gonna have like a sign-in sheet? I mean, all our phone numbers were on the doors the last time and people called and then we'd go and meet them outside. So do we want them in the restrooms? You know, here we go. And some people don't care, you know, they'll, they'll walk in and they're not gonna have a mask on. They're not gonna use the sanitizer. So maybe we just have a special selectments meeting as I work on these different things and decide exactly, you know, or later in the month. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's up to us. It's up to the three of us on how we're gonna do this and then we'll do it.
Right now, I'm saying, it sounds like we're better off being closed, right?
Yes.
Well, yes, right now, yes. I think so. I think so. And I think, you know, it's going well, so.
Let's have a meeting.
I'm sorry, Jim. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, the three of us need to have a meeting and discuss how we're gonna go forward with this and get back somewhat on track.
Yep, yep.
Barb, let me ask this. How, how are we doing with running the town? Are people getting what they need?
Yep.
Remotely?
Yep. They are. I mean, not-
Are they able, they seem to be able to get permits. I know Wetland is, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting in May.
Yep.
Do we really need to open up right now for operating virtually?
I'm not suggesting opening before June 1st because we're not ready to do that.
Well, even if it's June 1st, let's say we go to July 1st. No, I hear you. Let's have a meeting. Okay. All right. I got it.
Yep.
Well, so now, the other thing, people are already asking about renting the park, the pavilion. Personally, I mean, here we go again with, you know, bathrooms that are open. What is our liability if, you know, somebody becomes sick after? Are we gonna, they're gonna say, well, I was there.
No, you can't, you can't, you're not supposed to be with more than five people. And we can't monitor the social distancing.
No.
We gotta stop this summer. There can't be any of that. That's my opinion.
Totally agree, Russ, Barbara. We can't be renting out the park for functions until this cools off.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to know. That's good. I mean, that settles it because they're, they're asking and I said, well, first of all, you know, we, I'm not going to open the kitchen and we don't even want the bathrooms open and we have no water that's running out there. The playground is, you know, if we rent it, people are gonna go and get into the playground or they're gonna get on the basketball court and those things have been shut off. And we, it's, the park is not closed down per se because people can still go and walk. And that's probably all they should be doing there. Yeah.
That's right. That's right. Yeah.
All right. So, um, those are some of the things. So I already said about the unemployment numbers. We have 117 people right now.
Yeah, Barbara, can I ask you a question about the pavilion? Am I allowed to talk?
Yeah.
Oh, so I walk there five days a week. There's a refrigerated trailer there that's plugged in. Do you know about that?
No.
It's on a trailer. It's a big, like, walk-in refrigerator.
What? Where is it? First of all, somebody's got some background talking going on. If you could mute, whatever. Where, where exactly is it?
On the back of the pavilion by the kitchen door. It's, it's on a trailer and it's a walk-in refrigerator and it's plugged into the outlet. That's what it looks like. I have a picture of it. I'll send it to you. I was just-
Well, you can send John out there tomorrow and unplug it.
No, I'm not gonna plug it.
I wonder if somebody just brought it there and plugged it in. That's really, I will check on that. I had no idea.
There's steps walking up to it, wooden steps?
You're kidding me.
I'm not kidding you. It was there yesterday.
They could take it in it.
That's really weird.
They're open it. What, what if there's dead bodies in there?
I don't know.
No, I will, well, I will definitely send the guys out there. I, I didn't know it was there. And I just went by there the other day, but I guess I'm just not looking at it. I'm looking at poison ivy.
By the kitchen door.
All right. Trying to think, do we have something? No. I don't know what it is. Okay. Somebody's planning something that we don't know about, so we'll get after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
So, okay, so future board meeting, commission meetings. So, for example, I would like to be able to go before Wetlands in June for Davenport. We have to have a public-
You're talking June now?
Oh, wait a minute. May, 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 in May.
Yeah, May, right.
So are you planning on meeting in the town hall?
No, it sounds like we're closing the June 1st. I have asked Karen to set up a Zoom meeting. I've asked the applicants to send me stuff as soon as they can so I could get it out to all interested parties. Even though, even though I don't have to do that, but I'm not gonna make people go looking for information. I'm getting it out there. For example, I expect the subdivision for the east side of Woods to come before us in May. And I've asked the owner and the engineer to get me the plans ASAP. Don't wait for the night before because I might not take it up then because of the times that we're in. I want to make sure I get that information and I could send it to people I know who are very interested in it.
Okay.
And I would do the same with Davenport. I would, I don't know who's interested in Davenport because it's gotta get done. It's not like it's a controversial issue. But yeah, we're gonna have a Zoom meeting.
I have to do it. I have to do it. I, um-
Yeah, Karen needs to set that up. I'll, I'll touch base with her tomorrow to make sure she knows. Does she know how to set up these meetings, I would assume, right?
Well, Julie's gonna be the man behind the curtain.
Oh, so Julie's our Zoomer? Okay.
Yeah, I'm the Zoomer, yeah.
All right. So Julie, we're gonna need to set that up for our May meeting.
I'll, I'll touch base with Karen and get it done.
So now, Jim, what about zoning? Same thing? He's on mute.
Jim, you unmute?
Do you have to unmute Jim Conway?
Make me hung up.
I didn't mute Jim. Maybe Jim's self-muted?
Yeah, maybe. Okay, well, because zoning's coming up. Now, what, next Monday?
You got me now?
Oh, I got you now. Yep.
There you are.
I have to push pound six. Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I'm here.
So I'm just asking about the zoning meeting for May. Are you going forward with that and meeting in the town hall?
No, Zoom.
Okay, okay.
Julie's right there. She knows.
Yep, it's for Monday.
It's for Monday.
Yeah, Barb, if we, if we close town hall at June 1st, we can't be having meetings.
No, well, I, well, I didn't know if you all scheduled them already. That's the thing.
Well, believe me, let me tell you something. Zoning wouldn't, wouldn't have scheduled one except for pressure from a certain applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyhow, we'll get through it. We're good. We're good.
I mean, ZBA did their meeting on Zoom. We did the Board of Finance. That was not a problem. And so that brings me to the next thing. You know, we're talking about the town budget. And the annual town meeting is in May. We still have to have it because there are things that we do have to take care of. But it was, it's always called the annual budget and town meeting. So now that the budget passed and it was 4.1 million, closer to 4.2, and the Board of Finance set the mill rate at 15.8, down from 15.85, that is, that's, that's the biggest chunk. We don't have any Board of Ed members. So it's just, I don't know, you know, there's not a whole lot, but we still have to have the meeting. So I will get, get that agenda out and we will do a Zoom meeting. This Zoom, this program that we have allows up to 250 people. I don't think we're gonna have.
Well, we're not gonna get that.
You're not gonna have 10 people.
You know what I'd like, you know what I'd, I'd like to do is have this annual town meeting outdoors, either at the park-
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
Bring a lawn chair or cooler, whatever, and have our annual town meeting.
A six-pack.
We got, we got a lot of space in Roxbury. We can go outside.
I like that idea, Barb. I do.
We closed the park, so we're not gonna have any water or anything out there, but that's totally, it is, uh, it's the 19th.
It takes 20 minutes.
I know. It's 20, it's not gonna be long.
But we meet at the basketball court.
No, we don't want you on the basketball court. We can, well, I'll send you, I'll send you the agenda. It's gonna be nothing, but-
We can Zoom it.
Right, you should consider it, Barb. It's unique. We should have fun in these times. You should consider that. That's a great idea.
Okay, well, I gotta know soon because I gotta put it in the, in the legal notice.
Outdoors.
Yeah, outdoors, in the ballpark, behind the town hall.
Yeah, I'll take first base.
We could do that. Somebody check the info.
If you be on the pitch and smell, Barb, we're good.
Wow. Okay, so, and as far as the other things with the budget, the town budget, you know, we're running, and Kim Barron can jump in anytime, we're running, you know, right where we should be, basically. We're, uh, we've used 86% of our budget. We have, you know, a little, one and a half percent left. Just mixing numbers there. And we're doing, we're doing well.
Well, we didn't have snow.
I know. Kim Barron, you want to say anything?
If this weather pattern we're in now hit us in January, we would have been in big trouble. But it, the spring is, I can't believe that. Leaves aren't even out yet. It's really strange.
But what I, well, a lot came out today over at my house, but the other, what was I gonna say? The, I just lost my thought with the, with the budget. We have never, this, with this budget passing, this is one of the few, and I don't remember ever doing it, we could possibly have, is we did not buy this budget down with our fund balance. And that is really amazing. Now, we did buy the, the budget down in the, in the fiscal year that we're in. And we normally, we're basically budgeting a deficit because we don't use it all and the money goes back at the end of the year. So, but that won't, that piece will not be in this upcoming budget because we didn't buy it down, which is pretty amazing. And we did add money. The Board of Finance wanted to add money for all the unknowns here. But Kim Barron, you want to say anything?
Um, I don't have a whole lot to say other than we're trying to kind of toe the line from now till the end of June. Not that they do only what is necessary. We had talked about maybe chip sealing some more roads. I think we have money to do that since we didn't spend on snow and salt and sand and overtime in public work.
We are gonna be chip sealing some roads. And I'll tell you, another thing, but we did add extra money in is these, some of these ash trees are already starting to look really scary. And, uh-
Yeah, there's a couple I've seen.
They are not gonna, you know, some of these windstorms. We had, we had a tree go down last night, but that was a big old pine tree. But these ash trees, I mean, they're leaning. When the ones that are over near this end of town are, are getting pretty scary. So we're gonna have to start taking some of these. We already have. We've already, we've already done that. But we're gonna have to-
The only thing I would say about that is that the state did pass legislation so that we can apply through LoCIP to get reimbursed for any of those trees that we have to take down due to the Emerald Ash Forest.
Wow. I wouldn't count on that with a $900 million deficit that he just announced.
I know. And we have had a couple taken down and we're keeping the billing separate, so we'll see how that goes.
They do have deficits every year and we get our money no matter what. It's all bonded. The bond, the money for LoCIP is all bonded, so that's not an issue. We'll get it.
Yeah. Okay, car break-ins. I just put that on there because I, I put that message out many times. And some people still leave their cars unlocked. They leave their purses in there. They leave money over the, over their visors.
Where they doing that?
And so, and you know, those, the police, the lieutenant at the troop is saying it's really widespread throughout the, it's, it's actually national. And there are so many people that are out of work. It's drug-related. And they're just cruising through the towns. They try your door. If it's open, they ransack it. If your keys are in it, they're stealing the cars. So the other, this latest rampage that hit New Milford, Bridgewater, Woodbury, Washington, Roxbury had one. So I think that, and that was right on the end of Painter Hill Road going into Woodbury. So I think people are finally getting the message. We had, we had a car stolen in Roxbury and they had two stolen in Bridgewater the last time. But it's, some people say, well, we need police all, you know, all night. I don't think that's the answer. The easiest answer is lock your door because they're not breaking in. They're not breaking the car or the windows or anything like that to get in. And, you know, you could put the, the troop is patrolling and, but for us to have another person out there, you gotta be where they are and that's kind of hard. So what, do you agree with that or no? Having somebody work like three to-
No, you're right.
Hi, Barbara. Jim, no, we can't, we can't be putting officers out there 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. If people can't lock their car and take the keys out, I mean, it's, it's not our responsibility to, to watch after every little move.
Right, I agree.
No.
I just wanted to make sure you were with me on that.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, they're, it's, it's all over. Trumbull got hit really bad and we, but we've had, we've had it happening here in low numbers. But I, finally, like I said, this whole area got hit and Roxbury had one. So I said, well, maybe it's, maybe it is getting out. I mean, there was even a, not in Roxbury, but in one of the other towns, somebody left their car open. They had a weapon in their glove compartment. It was stolen. So it's crazy.
Crazy. It's called common sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
I know. Well, I just wanted to make sure you agree. I don't need any night, night shifts that late.
No, not at all. Not at all. No, no, no.
Okay, transfer station permits, we're gonna start with that. We, we already voted to leave all the, the costs the same. And, you know, they're, they're starting to be on sale now, and that's, that's something different because we're not letting people come in to purchase them into the town hall. It's gonna be a lot by mail. People are already dropping off checks. And they're just gonna have to get mailed. I don't know how else to do it. You know, if we hired somebody to stand up at the transfer station to put permits on, people don't want them in your car, and we don't want, it's a, it's a.
That's true. Do people know this, Barb? Do they know this? I didn't see an email blast to say mailing.
I know. It's going, it's going tomorrow because.
That's a great idea.
Because after I made the call about the car thing, I said, if you don't get my email blasts, I don't have your email. And I got a whole bunch of them, and Jimmy just put them in today. So I was waiting for that. So that is going, that's going out. Okay, the local bridge program. The budget, we were waiting for the bonding commission to meet, which they did. And then we were not selected, and actually, for Davenport. So I called the DOT, and I said, you know what? This is, this is unbelievable to me because you said we were right there in the running. And they said, we have all of your information, but we only funded the prior year. So like, two bridges got funded in Cheshire. And so they said, we're going to be at, we're coming out again with another round in like July. So we'll be ready for it. But that's why I need to get before Wetlands, because I have to, if we.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we'll have a May meeting, yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's, which was very disappointing to me, very. And I did call Leonard Engineering, and they're coming out to update the Botswor Hill. So that, because they know that we, Davenport and Botswor are our two primary ones.
Absolutely. Do we have to pay them? Do we have to pay Cardinal to come out and update?
Oh, Leonard? They haven't, they're gonna, I'm sure they're gonna charge us. He's looking out over all the information.
He's already looked at it.
But he's, I mean, he's gonna come back out and look at the bridge, because we remember you said, stay with Leonard Engineering.
Are we, are we talking about Leonard or Cardinal?
No, 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 no. Leonard Engineering did the first.
Right, and it was way over. It was like 800,000.
We, we submitted it for the local bridge last, the last time around. And it did not get it because it wasn't severe. And now we're, I'm saying it is severe. Can you update the application? Cardinal did not do Botswor Hill. Leonard Engineering did.
Right, so Cardinal never even looked at Botswor Hill?
They did, they did look, they, they looked at it. They didn't do anything or spend any time on it.
Because they thought it wasn't that severe.
They, they also said.
No, Jim, Jim, I think we told Barbara to stick with Leonard, not switch engineers on that bridge.
On that particular one? Because Cardinal gave us that whole, Cardinal gave us the whole breakdown on every bridge in town.
That, that wasn't a real.
That was preliminary.
Right. That wasn't, that wasn't anything that they could have put in an application to the local bridge program. It was, it was like a flyby on all the bridges. Not all of them, only one and 12. Or six, or whatever it was. And so.
Yeah.
We had submitted, the prior season, we submitted Botswor Hill, and Leonard Engineering did it. And we did not get it because the state said it was not severe. So I called them back, because you told me to stay with Leonard. And I said, you've gotta update this because it is severe, and I would need to get this application in, in May. And so they are looking at it.
The other, originally, we were gonna realign Botswor Hill with 67, and now we're taking that out of the picture. It might be cheaper.
Yep. But I think that when we did do that, we had already removed it.
Oh, really? Okay.
I think we did.
It seemed like it was like $800,000, and it just seemed like a little, a brook. And, and it was like 800 grand.
Yep, yep.
Anyway, okay.
All right. So the next order of business is Citrine Power. There you are, Sella. Sella Bernie is with us. And we had initially spoke, talked about this a couple of months ago, and then we were, you know, put on hold because of everything. But the selectman wanted to, first of all, Russ, you were gonna be asking questions of someone else about this whole process. But if you could just start from the beginning, Sella, that would be great.
Yeah. Thank you for having me. My company, Citrine Power, is a developer of medium-scale solar power plants in the 1 to 5 megawatt range. We are agnostic between ground mount, rooftop, and carports, essentially. We are a northeastern developer. We develop, we're based out of Connecticut. Our offices are in Greenwich and Westport, Connecticut. But we have a reach in assets, actually, in Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, and Massachusetts, and we have a little bit of assets in Illinois as well. It just so turns out that in the last few years, a lot of our assets are ground-mounted projects. So the Connecticut renewable energy market is, has been a little bit of a stop and go compared to our neighbors in Massachusetts, New Jersey, and New York. All of them have continued to support renewable energy, whether it's on a larger scale or a smaller scale. And Connecticut has been a little bit stop and go, stop and go, and it's not been a very widespread growth. Historically, I have not invested in Connecticut, but in the last few years with Citrine Power, we've kind of made a commitment, since I live in Connecticut, I want to invest in assets here. So we have found that a lot of our projects fall under the virtual net metering program in Connecticut. That's the only way we can make them work financially. And the virtual net metering program in Connecticut is a very small program, and it only benefits three types of power users. Municipal clients, such as yourself, towns and cities, state entities, and agricultural entities, farms, farms of any kind. It's a very broad definition. The way it works is, it's, it's almost like a triangular relationship. We lease a piece of, private piece of property, or we could lease a town property as well, but we typically lease a private piece of property where we think it's going to be a little bit easier to, for us to connect to either EverSource lines or United Illuminating lines. We need a three-phase interconnection and a street frontage, more or less, to have easy access. We typically do it for about 10 acres. We don't like to do anything less than 2 megawatts because of economies of scale. And so we lease the property, we permit it, and I can talk a little bit about the permitting process. We own the system, and we give our power to the distribution company, either EverSource or United Illuminating. What we produce from the solar system is another source of supply for them. In return, under the special net metering program, we have to have a host customer, and a lot of our customers are municipalities or one farm, actually, right now.
And where is that, where is that farm?
North Branford. Yeah. And it's, it's a farm, but also it's interesting that you ask, because it's a farm, but it shares its virtual net metering benefits with the local municipality. So it's a farm and a municipality. Well, we can, you know, anyway, so I won't digress. We tell EverSource who our host customer is. And if it's a municipality, let's just say it's the town of Roxbury, once the system is allocated, they tell us, okay, give me the account numbers in town of Roxbury that you're working with, and we can give up to five, five account numbers per megawatt. And we give to them, and they say, okay, every month, they're going to give a retail rate credit. It's about 13 to 15 cents a kilowatt hour in EverSource territory. Now, to Illuminating, it's a lot higher. They decrease those accounts by the kilowatt hours that we actually produce times the 15 cents. So a lot of the times, the towns wipe out, if they have enough consumption, they wipe out their bills. They get, with all the credit that EverSource gives them. But we also have to make money, because we just gave our power to EverSource for free, and the towns are crediting, and EverSource is crediting the towns for the amount of solar that we produce. We enter into a bilateral contract with the towns, and the towns pay us a much discounted rate. So whatever they get credited from EverSource, let's just say it's 15 cents, and what they pay us typically 11 cents. The four cents per kilowatt hour is money that the towns essentially save on their, on their bills. This is a very widespread application. It has, in New York, in New Jersey just started, and in Massachusetts. It's been going on in Massachusetts for a very long time. We've done it with a lot of municipalities in Massachusetts. But it's not as widespread in Connecticut, and EverSource and United Illuminating cap how many dollars, how many, you know, how many megawatts that we can do under this program as independent power producers. This started in 2015. The cap every year gets full, full very quickly. I guess I have the data from 12 months ago. 12 months ago, there's 169 municipalities in Connecticut. Only 17 of them were taking advantage of this. In the next round, I think there were another maybe 10 more municipalities, and now there's a huge waitlist. We are talking to the Energy and Technology Committee, and that waitlist cap is going to be lifted, hopefully, because, as you know, a lot of the tri-state states, like the three states, they are making renewable energy a priority in terms of digging out of the COVID financial distress. In fact, New Jersey just allowed construction only for solar to go forward as an essential business just, just two days ago. So that's, that is, in a nutshell, it's virtual. It's a financial transaction for the town. We don't put any solar systems on the town property. You're not encumbered by any kind of, you know, material. You don't have any capital costs, and you just reap the benefits of it. It's a long-term contract that we sign, but there's, you can get out of it, obviously. It's a virtual net metering contract. We just ask that, you know, you give us a little bit of a grace period, so that we can replace you with another municipality if you, if you wanted to get out of the contract. Now, I live in Weston, Connecticut myself, and the town in Weston has almost three megawatts. Two with another developer, that's a competitor of mine, and one with my projects. And that's the perfect example. So we put the system in Middlefield and Middletown. It's, our system is a 10-acre property that crosses between Middlefield and Middletown. We are selling the net metering benefits to the town of Weston and to the town of Wilton. They're sharing it because Weston was already buying 2 megawatts of credits from someone else, and they only had 1 megawatt left. And the other 1 megawatt, Wilton is taking it, you know, sister towns, more or less. And they're saving a ton of money. We just actually went through their savings for the month of January, February, and March. And, you know, it's the first time that Wilton is doing it. It just gives me so much pleasure to tell them, oh my God, you saved so much money. So what we're asking, and I'll pause if you have any questions. I know it's not very intuitive, because it's kind of like a, you know, it, it sounds like smoke and mirrors. It's a financial transaction. Why wouldn't they make, you know, a little bit forward? I don't know. I don't make the rules. So I'm happy to answer questions so far, and then I can kind of talk a little bit about what, you know, we proposed with Roxbury.
Okay, so when, when we first started speaking about this, one of the, the solar farm, that was the one in North Branford, or?
No, the one that we, we have a 2.5-megawatt system that's operating right now, which is the one that I said, it's in Middlefield and Middletown. The entrance is from Middlefield, actually. You can go see it if you, if you wanna drive by. It's on a main road, on Route 66, right behind Dunkin' Donuts, across from Agway. That gives it to Wilton and Weston that's operating. We're starting construction in June on another project in East Hampton. And the town of East Hampton is actually going to buy the, you know, net metering credits, and they're our customer host. And that, they're off the waitlist. They've already been allocated, so that's why we're breaking ground. We're waiting for the final permit from the Siding Council. We have another 2.5-megawatt project in North Branford. That also has a virtual net metering allocation. It's in United Illuminating territory. On that one, we're waiting for our interconnection agreement. We have some line upgrade costs that we have to pay United Illuminating to upgrade their substation. We're waiting for that cost to come back to make sure that it's not cost prohibitive. We have another 2.5-megawatt project in Portland, Portland, Connecticut. That, the town of Portland is going to take that. That's in the waitlist. That's new, so we're kind of waiting. And then this project that I'm proposing, hopefully for Roxbury, it's also in Middletown. So most likely, so it's a 1-megawatt project. But, you know, Barbara and I have been talking about this, and we reviewed already how much the town can take. The town's accounts are not that high. You don't have a lot of consumption to actually take a megawatt. Your top three accounts make about a tenth of a megawatt, basically. But we can give it to Washington. We've already spoken to Washington. We can give it to the schools. I know you have a common school system. But we can also cut all of that, and we can give the rest of it to Middletown. We've been talking to Middletown. It's a large city. They have a lot. And then, once the project is happening, that's what happened in Middle, in our Middletown, our former project that we sold to Weston and Wilton. They were like, yeah, I don't know if we wanna buy it. And then when we were breaking ground, they're like, who's buying the credits? We sold them already. So I think, I think they'll probably buy the rest of it. Whatever you're not taking, they're probably gonna take it. But there's a ton of towns that we can sell it to. So that's, that's it.
So what is the proposal for Roxbury, for them, unless, Russ or Jim, you have any questions at this point?
Uh, no.
You wanna hear what she's got?
Okay, so this is a three-step process. The first step is, because there's a waitlist, and this whole cap opens and closes, we have to put our projects with a host customer. We have to name who our municipal host customer is going to be that's going to take some of the benefits, or at least, you know, part of the benefits. We have to go in and apply. So that is non-binding on any town. We're just basically applying, and, you know, if we get an allocation, that's great. However, before we actually apply, we try to kind of explain how the math is going to work, and you do get the allocation, and the cap gets increased. And if we want to move forward, how are the savings going to work out? We present that to the town. But the first step is just to apply and to get in the queue. We are expecting, or at least that's the feedback that we're getting from the Energy and Technology Committee, that whoever is in the queue in the next legislative session, which is going to be a special session, hopefully at the end of June, that's what's being talked about right now. They're gonna lift the, they're gonna clean the queue for virtual net metering, because they realize that all of the municipalities need these savings, and it's a big saving. The second step is, once the queue, once the cap is lifted, EverSource sends us, sends a contract and says, okay, the retail rate that we're going to credit the towns, now you have your allocation. You have almost 18 months to complete your project. And everything that we're gonna send them is going to be, whatever that rate is going to be at that period of time, when the cap is lifted, they tell us. And they send a services agreement for the town to sign. Again, non-binding. It's just, here's our place in the queue. But now we have the allocation, and as soon as we have the allocation, we negotiate our contract amongst ourselves. And it's a contract, it's a 25-year contract, but there are outs, of course, for the town, as I said, as long as you guys, as long as we can find a replacement, if you, if you don't want to take it. And that, those are the three steps. The third step is the binding step. First is the application, non-binding. The second step is a little bit closer, because now it's a reality. We have a cap allocation. We don't wanna waste it. And then we negotiate our final contract and get it in place. That's.
How much money are we gonna save on this?
So you are going to probably save, I was just calculating it based on the, your top three accounts are about 150,000 kilowatt hours a year. Just as a, you know, point of reference, a 1-megawatt project, 1-megawatt AC project, it produces about 1.6 million kilowatt hours. So you're almost 10% of the total production. And we can only allocate. And we can only allocate five accounts. So, what we want to do is to give you two accounts, your largest accounts, which is 100,000 kilowatt hours a year, more or less. That's what you're consuming. And the rest of it, we have to make room for a larger buyer so that we can actually sell the rest of the 1.5 million kilowatt hours to them.
So, like Russ asked the question, how much money are we going to save?
Yeah, so I'm getting there. I'm just giving you the calculation. So, for 100,000, I think you're probably going to save $4,000, $5,000 a year just because you don't have a very big account.
Right, understood. What's our liability? What may we have to pay into this? Is there anything we will have to pay into this in the future?
No, zero, because it's not on your property. I mean, the system that we're proposing is in Middletown.
Then, when, Russ, we'd be idiots not to sign up, right?
You wouldn't be idiots. If you don't want to sign, you don't want to sign. I wouldn't call anybody an idiot. But I think it's very beneficial. A lot of towns are taking the advantage. And I am happy to give you our town references. We have customers that are towns, obviously. You should just talk to them directly. And some of them are working with our competitors. You might as well, I mean, you might as well just hear the benefits from them if you want to.
I'm going to trust Barb on this. I'm going to leave it up to her. Do you need to select them both, Barb?
Yeah, I would because we're going to be entering into an agreement. But the one thing that's always floating out there, because it's been in the past, you know, about the legislature lifting the cap. And so, if they don't do that, where is all this?
Nothing. You lost nothing. You just basically signed a, you know, LOI. We got into, we lose a couple thousand dollars because we have to do a little engineering before we apply and submit for interconnection with Eversource on our project in Middletown. That's it.
Then, would we wait in the queue again, just wait there? Or would we miss out because everything fell apart and we just have to pay attention and get back into it for the next time, if and when they ever lift the cap? Because right now, it's my understanding, everything is, if they don't lift the cap, there's nothing new that can come on board, correct?
Yes, that's true. However, Connecticut is coming up with a new program. The reason why they've been resisting in lifting the cap is because PURA and DEEP are working on a new legislation to make virtual net metering a little bit more widespread but less lucrative for independent power producers, which is still fine. Like, we'd love for the program to be a little bit more available. They're going to try to come up with a new program that's a little bit more similar to the New York one. But they haven't been able to come up with the legislation at all. And the more it stalls, the more we have probably an argument as the industry is saying, "Well, you have to increase the cap for virtual net metering." That's what's been happening right now and there's no sight of the new legislation that's going to come. But if everything falls apart, if they don't lift this cap, we can always look into a new, into the new program. But again, for you, it's a waiting game. Like, there's nothing off your skin. Like, nothing, no skin off your back because nothing, you know, we're just waiting.
Correct. Barbara, tonight, Barbara, Jim?
Yep.
Four to 5,000 isn't a big number.
No.
No, because we just don't. Yeah.
I mean, it's just not, that's not a huge number, whether it's a savings or whatever it is. There's, that's a small number. And we got to be careful what we're entering into. That money could, is nothing.
No, I don't disagree with you that the amount for... The what? I mean, it's four to 5,000 dollars a year because we don't, we just don't have anything big enough that's taking up all that electric. Because, well, you're saying that's only the top three, but we, but you need... So, why would we not go with the top five?
Well, because if you do the top five, I'm going to be producing 1.6 million kilowatt hours.
Oh, okay.
If you do the top five, you're still going to take only a fraction of all of the production. And what do I do with everything else that I produce, right? Like, I need to sell them somewhere, but I can't because this is the silly and stupid, you know, forgive me, but this is a stupid process. They will only allow five accounts instead of letting anybody, anybody at this. If you're restricting it to municipalities, you might as well let the municipalities put all of their accounts in there, regardless, until we fill up the total capacity of the system, right?
Roxbury's not big enough.
Yeah, Roxbury is not big enough. In other towns too, like some other towns, they want to be like, "Okay, but can we just not put more accounts here?" No, five. We're limited with five. That's the rule.
Yep. But you have to go into a 25-year contract.
Yeah.
With rates locked in, those rates locked in at getting, paying 11 cents versus...
Yeah. You're usually going to get somewhere between, in the last five years, it's been somewhere between 13 and 15 and a half percent. For 13 and 15 and a half cents, essentially, you're always saving, you know, 4 cents to 3 cents or something. 2 cents to 4 cents per kilowatt hour. I agree. I don't disagree with you that Roxbury, it's unfortunate. We would have loved to sell everything to you. I mean, if you had the capacity, we would sell it all to you. We would love it. But you could, you could come in as the host customer into this project or if you want, we're talking to others, we can let others be the host customer and then spare two accounts after they take majority of it for you and you can then decide. I mean, either way is fine by us.
Is Kim Barron, Kim Barron, you still on here? Kim?
I am.
Do you have any thoughts on this? I mean, you know, we...
It's kind of hard to wrap my brain around it, but we always had issues when we wanted, I mean, we're in a consortium now.
Right.
Through CCM, for our kilowatt, our supplier, I mean, our demand. And we had to have other like-sized towns because we just don't generate enough on our own. That seems to be always the problem and it just is not cost-effective. Right now, we're paying 8 cents a kilowatt hour for our supply. And which I think is good. And...
Well, it's very good because if we went in with this, we'd be paying 11.
No, but I want to explain to you, whether you go with us or someone else, and I know this is not that much dollars for you. But there, so it's regardless of what you pay with your third-party generation or even if you buy your power from Eversource. This is regardless of your power rate. You might actually in the future negotiate with the consortium and get your power at 5 cents a kilowatt hour, which is excellent. This will still get credited at 15 cents a kilowatt hour to your account. It's regardless of what you pay for your power. It's a financial transaction. So, you will get 15 cents. You will pay us 14. So, off of your 8 cents, you'll also get a 4 cent discount effectively, right? But again, I understand it's not that much dollars, you know, on the nominal amount.
Because that's 5,000 a year. It's not.
Yeah, because you don't have that much production. That's the issue, unfortunately.
But we did talk about the schools.
I agree with Jim on this. I think I hear you, Jim.
Thank you.
It's not worth it. We shouldn't spend a half an hour on this, which we've already have. And it doesn't sound like we really fit into the business model. It's not worth it to go this way. That's my opinion.
I agree, Russ.
I wanted to bring it to you, I mean, because we, personally, I really didn't know what the savings were. It is still, you know, about what they will be paying. I mean, well, it was the 13 to 15 cents. And then, if we're paying 11 or 8 or whatever, there is savings. It's a no-brainer. But what we were talking about, it's a no-brainer as far as how it works. But yes, it's not, it's not a huge amount of money for us. But we were talking about going in with the schools.
Yeah.
Where did that, you said you already spoke to Washington, so where...
Well, the last time I spoke with Washington was at your office when we first introduced this process. He was there. And, you know, shortly thereafter, we've been in the situation that we're in COVID. We can redirect that. We can talk to them. Again, you know, this is an elective process, so it's up to you. I'm happy to bring them on. We're talking to multiple towns. We just wanted to follow up and close the circle with you since you are.
Right.
We've talked about it before.
I mean, really, the only advantage, the big advantage in it, you know, Washington would be able to save a little bit more than us, but it would be the school. It would be the regional school. It's where the money, savings would come in. And that's why, you know, we were going to look into that. That was going to be the next step.
Yeah.
But, correct. If Roxbury's going to go in on its own, it is not a great amount of savings to lock in.
Even if we go with someone else, you'll still have the same amount of savings because you're limited by your own account, unfortunately.
Right.
You know, let's just say we brought the schools in or Middletown. It doesn't matter who we bring in.
Well, but the school would be an advantage to us because we're paying the bill for the regional schools.
Yeah.
As long as the other three towns agree.
Correct.
Two towns.
Well, the very first meeting, I invited the other two first selectmen. And Bridgewater, he couldn't attend, but Jim did. And he was interested, but, you know, none of us have really given it thought, a whole lot of thought because we just haven't been able to get together and do anything.
No, no, no. Preliminary.
Yep, yep.
So, I'm not going to make a motion to sign on anything at this time.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Well, so, I mean, if, you know, if we could get the school and we know what the cost savings is and we can project that to see what that would mean to the towns, that might be interesting, but...
With all that's going on, Barbara, no, Megan doesn't have time for this, believe me.
Yeah, yeah, I can see that.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. Okay, we'll keep posted. And if we have any other spare accounts in our other projects that we already are allocating to larger accounts, we'll definitely let you know. I just wanted to make...
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you. Yeah.
Really appreciate you explaining it.
Of course.
And real, and getting the numbers that we asked for, so I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. All right, have a good night.
Thank you and good luck.
Yep.
And if you're looking, if you're looking for sites, are you looking for sites?
Yeah, we're looking for sites actively all the time.
Well, then, I manage two of the largest landfills in Connecticut, so...
Oh, we'd love to take a look.
Barbara will give you my info.
Yeah, that'll be great.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, talk to you soon.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
So, the last thing, I was just going to add to the agenda, was our resident troopers activity summary. And really, there were three criminal, non-criminal investigations. Let's see, what else? There's not... You know, they're trying to make an effort to do enforcement in high complaint areas. And one of the biggest, the highest complaint areas happens to be our land trusts right now, unfortunately, because the parking lots are just so overrun.
Yeah, Mine Hill, you couldn't get through again.
Yeah, and that's got to stop.
Parking things up, they're parking anyway. It's unbelievable.
Well, I did speak with the executive director and said, "You know what? We can't have our police sitting over there and babysitting the parking lots. So, you're going to have to look to hire somebody because when they're full, they can't let other people come in because they are, they're blocking the roads." And so, they are looking to possibly hire someone. And they're inquiring about, you know, police and paying the police. And that would be, what do you call it, private duty. So, I'm going to be talking with them tomorrow about that. I have no problem with that. You know, somebody who's not working.
They should be looking for donations is what they should be doing.
I said that, you know, they should have something out there.
Really? Because these are people who are coming out of nowhere. Where do these people used to go is what I want to know.
Oh, no, these people aren't from around here.
No, they're not.
Where did they used to go? Did they go to the mall and they can't go there, so they took up...
No, they went to Central Park. And they all moved, they all moved up here.
Like, last weekend or, I mean, two weekends ago, there were 12 people, there were 12 cars over at Botsworke Hill. And they ran the plates and one person was from Roxbury. They were from Waterbury, Hartford, Bridgeport. They were from all over Connecticut, so, I don't know.
They should, because they told me that, believe it or not, 90% of their donations are Roxbury residents.
Yeah.
Which kind of strikes me.
Yes.
So, now's the time. They're missing an opportunity, if in my opinion.
Well, I don't know. They just had the, what, giving, Give Local? They were one of the top organizations in the number that they collected of donations. More...
From local.
Yeah, yep.
But they're getting a lot of people from out of town who ought to give five bucks when they go.
It's more up here, I'm up here on the hill, Russ and Barbara. I'm up here on Botsworke Hill at the Arnholt. And we have cars, we had, I had three today pull off the side of the road by our Hayfield mailbox. We don't say anything, but they pulled off and they just walked Botsworke Hill. I've seen many, many people walking, which is fine, but they have to park somewhere. And that land trust parking lot, I see it three times a day. It's packed.
Yeah.
Yeah, amazing. I'm glad I know trails that nobody else knows about because it's amazing.
But what's it going to do? I mean, I mean, people, I mean, you have to allow, I wish they would be, learn how to park better.
Yeah. But they, you're right, Barbara. Land trusts need somebody in there managing that. It's not even a cop thing. It's...
No, no police.
People in the parking lot are parking all kinds of messed up and you could fit a lot more cars in there if they had somebody...
They don't have white lines.
No.
Right. If you don't, if you don't have lines, they don't have to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a problem when they start blocking the roads. And so, I asked them if they would take those two preserves off of their website, which they did. They told me they were going to. So that when the out-of-towners are looking, you know, at the land trusts and all the preserves, those wouldn't show up because they're always packed, always. And, but it's an issue. It's a safety issue. And even if there was, you know, if the police can patrol it, but it doesn't make any sense because the cars are all empty. And, you know, if something happened over there, you can't get it...
You can't find the person who parked off screwed up. He's two miles into the woods.
I don't want to, I don't want to pay our constables to do a job for Roxbury Land Trust parking. It's, it's, it's up to the land trust.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we want to support them, I would think. But, yeah, I agree, Jim.
Well, I mean, it's a patrol thing and, but they're not going to be over there. I mean, Bill Cario got stuck over there just trying to get, you know, the cars out of the road on Mine Hill. If there was an ambulance call, they would never have gotten the ambulance up there. So, I said, "This cannot continue." So, you know, they are working on it. And, I mean, if they want to hire Joe Witkowski to go over there, they can do that. And it would be special duty. Or they pay somebody, you know, somebody that's looking for work, but it's got to change.
All right.
So, that's it.
I agree.
So, that's all I got. Anybody else have anything else?
No. Sorry, I got mad at Margaret, but they pressured me.
Margaret is still here.
I'm sorry, Margaret. I got mad, but I feel, I get pressured all the time and people aren't trusting what I'm telling them and that bothers me. It really does. I spend a lot of time out there. It's not fair to me. I don't think, that I see what I see and I know the regulations. I don't think that I see what I see and I know the regulations and, and people, like they don't care. I don't know. What do you want from me?
I support you, Russ. I, I agree, Russ. You're good. Done a good job.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that, I do.
I support, yep.
Yep.
And I support Margaret's concerns and she can always come to the board of selectmen for questioning.
I mean, I'll go out there, see what all the metal is, I don't know.
That's a deep, that's a deep issue and somebody buried a car there because...
But the other thing is, is if somebody...
They had to be from the 18th century.
You really want me, you really think it would help Jill Sloan if I went to DEEP and said, I think I see a hazardous waste site on her property? We have really backed off. We haven't intervened, we haven't deposed, we haven't intervened. We've only asked you, somebody to take a look at it. Metal, I agree, probably isn't your job, but you want me to go to DEEP? You, you're not thinking. We have been really quite laid back. We haven't deposed any of these applications in the, on the, on the west side there. We've, we've only asked the people to look at it.
Well, I'm going to...
And we have, Barbara, and I have, and I report back to you and I, and you don't listen to a thing I say, not a thing. You're hell bent on making this as difficult as you can on people who bought, we're talking about two houses on 50 acres. Really? It's a gift and you had the opportunity to buy it. You didn't meet the price. It's business.